Mary Ann?
Good evening, thanks so much for coming out tonight.
Bob?
Good evening, I'd like to welcome everyone, I'd also like to special welcome to our YMSL North Chapter, the boys that are sitting in the back will be here for about 30 minutes, and thank you guys for attending and getting involved, these guys are some impressive future leaders, I can assure you of that.
Sean?
Yes, welcome everybody, and especially the YMSL gentlemen that are here, I'm glad to see you, thanks.
Mike?
Thanks for coming today, the President awarded two Medals of Honor to medics from the Vietnam era, we've all been aware of the bruhaha that's blown up about the guys that got killed in the chair, just a reminder that our folks are still out there on the front line saying, "Not on my block," so pray for our troops, and if you know someone from the Vietnam era, they're really the forgotten folks, so thank them because the President says them another, thanks for being here.
Brings us to item five on the agenda, announcements, National Night Out, Chief Lacy, you want to come up and go to the lectern, please?
Good evening Mayor Council, I'd like to give you a quick overview of how we did, I believe we had an outstanding National Night Out program this year, there's a few photos that are, Curtis is gonna skim through there, let me give you a couple of numbers, we had 14 different locations that were represented within the city, including City Hall, we had 21 staff members from the public safety side, I don't have our police numbers but I know it was whole crew, is that not correct Chief Bob? The whole fire crew is up, but on the police side, I had 21 staff, broken down into nine teams, plus one volunteer who volunteered to be a cannon that night. We made a total of 46 different visits, those nine teams went to 46 locations for those 14 spots, so every, we had them broken down into 10 to 15 minute cycles, so we made 46 different locations, we expended 84 man-hours that night in the police department side, and we estimate approximately 400 adults and 90-plus children were contacted that night, I know Dr. Fanning has some numbers she submitted to me, just a little higher, about 425 and 95, we really weren't taking a head count while we were there, but those numbers, 400, 425, and 90 or 95 is who we contacted from our citizens that night, so I'm very proud of my team, I'm very proud of the teamwork that the fire department exhibited that night with us for National Night Out, and I think we had an outstanding program.
Congratulations to our police and fire team for everything they did, and the sponsors. Thank you Chief. Item 5.2, announcement Veterans Day event, Mike, do you want to join your lovely bride at the front of the building, in front of the, by the lectern?
It's been the microphone over, put questions, please.
On Saturday, the 11th of November, we're going to host a Veterans Day event for Chavano Park, the residents who are veterans, those that you know of, and as part of that, we've got the Extended Run Players from the University of Incarnate Word, who are going to present a program for us, it so happens that my lovely bride is the artistic director of the Extended Run Players, so she'll explain to you what the program is going to be about.
The Extended Run Players are a group of seniors who do an art form called Reader's Theater, which is basically storytelling with a group of people telling the story, we are associated with the Theater Department of University of Incarnate Word, and any proceeds from our performances are given to endow a scholarship for the Theater Department, actually, at any one time, we have about four students receiving monies from the Extended Run Player Scholarship Fund, I have a flyer explaining the event on November 11th, I'm really glad we get to do it on Veterans Day, and I'd just like to remind you that we're also celebrating my dad's birthday, I call him every year and say, "Daddy, the whole country is celebrating your birthday," we do first-person interviews, we read them of veterans of World War II, and some of them are poignant, some of them are funny, and then interspersed with those interviews, we have a group of people who sing, called the Cadenza Singers, who sing popular tunes of the 40s and 50s, the program is only an hour, and if you know of anybody who might be interested, whether they live in Chavano Park or not, frankly, schoolchildren love our program, we've done some performances in local high schools, bring them, this might be an eye-opener for them, for people who don't know much about World War II, and especially if you know any World War II veterans that are still alive, feel free to bring them, we'll be right here in the council room in City Hall, thank you.
To a clock.
Thanks, there's a flyer here, and where's rest of this?
Just hand it around.
Okay, I'm gonna pass it around.
Okay, they'll start at two, and after it's over, we'll have refreshments provided by residents, giving a chance to just get together and meet each other, so y'all come.
Item 5.3 is our pocket mission for Gold Star Family Recognition, Chavano Park is a community that has been here for about 61 years as a city, and before that, it was somebody's vision, around 70 years ago, the Rogers family got together and they thought, wow, it'd be wonderful to take the Rogers Ranch area and turn it into a place where returning World War II veterans could come to live, Chavano Park since then has been a community, it's been a community that loves our military, the early city leaders were military members, the Bradley family, John Bradley lives right across from me, that's the house that that family moved into right after his dad came back, and they have continually owned that in their family for almost, for close to 70 years now, my house was one that was owned by a general according to the Bradleys, and LBJ came to visit, because they recognized the caliber of the people in this community, in communities, this has been a community with great service in the military, and sometimes families pay the ultimate price, and in them paying the ultimate price, you and I have had the joy and are better for having known those young men and women, and we know the family members and we love the family members, and we celebrate the lives, and we mourn the passing, and together, we are better people, and America is a better nation for those young men and women. Before I hand out the proclamation to Barbara Simpson and to her husband, and recognize the Kentsers as well, I want to read the proclamation, if you will indulge me, please. Proclamation, Gold Star Mothers and Families Day 2017, whereas since our nation's founding in peace and in war, the values that define our brave men and women in uniform have remained constant, honor, courage, and selflessness, from the deafening sounds of combat to the silence of the sacred hills at Arlington, we remember the countless sacrifices our service members make to preserve the freedoms we too often take for granted, no one understands the true price of these freedoms, like our Gold Star families, whose humility even in times of grief represents the best of our country, today we recognize their sacrifices by listening to their stories, sharing in their pain and pride, and pledging to do all we can to honor them and the loved ones they hold close in their hearts, and whereas the city of Chavano Park has a long history of military service by men and women and their families, who have served our country in time of war, and whereas the city of Chavano Park has at least two families whose sons have paid the ultimate price in fighting for freedom and liberty, and whereas through unspeakable sorrow, our Gold Star families suffer from loss that can never be restored, pain that can never truly be healed, it is because of their selfless character and unfailing grace that Americans can come home each day, gather with family and friends, and live in peace and security, and through the debt our fallen soldiers and their families pay, and though the debt our fallen soldiers and families pay is one that can never fully pay back, we can never fully repay back, we must continue to support our veterans when they come home and stand by our military families who endure unthinkable loss, we must maintain the sacred covenant we share with our veterans by ensuring they have the care and benefits they deserve, and as citizens, we must all work to lift each other up in a matter that is worthy of those who have laid down their lives to protect the land and freedoms we cherish, and whereas, less than 1% of our nation wear the uniform, but all of us have an obligation to acknowledge the losses endured by Gold Star mothers and families, and to fill the painful absence of their loved ones, and with our profound gratitude, we must strive to support these families, not just with words but with actions, by being there every day for the parents, spouses, and children who feel the weight of their loss, on this day of remembrance, may we carry forward the work of those who gave their last full measure of devotion, and vowed to keep their memories burning bright in our hearts, and may we lift up their families, and who have steadfastly supported their mission through immeasurable heartbreak by remaining a nation worthy of their sacrifice, now therefore, I, Robert Werner, Mayor of the City of Chavano Park, do hereby proclaim September 24th as Gold Mothers and Families Day. Mike, if you would come forward, Barbara, if you would, please. Mike and Barbara have paid the ultimate sacrifice for the people that they love in this community, in this state, and in our nation, they are joined by William and Lori Kencer in the loss of William's brother Alfred, Lieutenant Alfred from the Vietnam era, Barbara, there's nothing that we can ever fully do to express our sympathy and our love for you, and for Michael, and for Mike, we wish you the best and we keep you in our prayers, may God bless you and keep you.
Thank you.
Yeah, the next item, item 5.4 is a presentation to Richard Laser for service to the city of Chavano Park since 1987, I'm gonna say a couple of words about Richard, he's not here with us, he probably had so much fun with the Planning and Zoning Commission that he just can't bear not coming back to this building without joining them, 1987, Richard Laser joined the Planning and Zoning Commission in Chavano Park, he soon became the chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then he became a city council member, and after his service as a city council member, they moved into Chavano Creek, and we subsequently decided that we couldn't get enough of Richard, so we annexed him, and in 2000, Richard joined the Planning and Zoning Commission after his absence when they were not in the city, and in the next 17 years, Richard has been our subject matter expert on drainage issues in the city, he's been somebody that has been a right-hand man for both Michael Janson, the current chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and for me over those years, I'm gonna miss his service, and I want to thank him publicly for everything that he has done so selflessly for our community. Okay, item 6.1, Town Plan Update and Discussion, Mike, I'm gonna recognize you and Bill for this matter.
Good evening Mike Janson, Planning and Zoning, as you recall, five or six months ago, I think before y'all, I gave you a basic outline as to why I thought our process would be after y'all asked, planning and zoning, give you an update on 2010 Town Plan, and we've been moving forward with that, today we held public hearings on provisions, future goals, city issues, city strengths and weaknesses, and opportunities and threats, on bike trails and sidewalks, on residential and commercial development, on flooding and drainage, we have two more to go, one in November will be on the City's municipal track, and December one in Norfolk, and also the highway improvement, in connection with these, what we tried to do is, the Planning and Zoning has tried to look at these issues in three separate meetings, we've got one meeting where we did an outline and update on it from either Bill and the city staff, or from an outside group such as KFW engineers who give us a briefing on the flooding, the next month we'll have a public hearing, we'll invite citizens, we'll put out a survey, and ask citizens to give us their input, either in the form of answering the survey, are coming before us and publicly telling us what they think about the survey, about all the items discussed in the survey, bringing all the items that aren't covered by the survey, and then at that same meeting, Planning and Zoning will also agenda items to discuss the survey, what we heard from the citizens, and what we heard from city staff, or from the outside engineers, and the next meeting, then we'll give a briefing from city staff who puts together a summary of what we heard during the public hearing, and they give us a list of, a brief outline of the items and conclusions we came to in Planning and Zoning from the previous meeting, so we've covered four of the topics that are presented to y'all, we have two more to go, on the municipal track, across those monetary highway, we heard a briefing on the municipal track at an October meeting, we'll have a public hearing on the municipal track and results in surveys at the November meeting, and then we'll hear also at the November meeting, we'll hear a discussion, I don't know if Tech Dot's gonna be here Bill, or if you're gonna make the presentation.
We'll present, coordinated with them, they will have a public outreach represented here to monitor and monitor track.
Okay, so we'll have that at the November meeting, and then we'll also put out a survey in November, that hopefully we get responses back, and we'll discuss that at the December meeting, as well as have open discussion by Planning and Zoning, I'm not limiting, although we're limited to these six items, I'm really planning, based on responses we get, I'm not trying to rush this, I don't plan to have this done in January or February, I told y'all before that we're not really in a hurry to get this done, what we want to do is get the maximum, make what we can from citizens, even after we close from the surveys, the surveys stay active on the city's website, in fact, we've got lots of responses after the survey was turned into Planning and Zoning, and again, at a future meeting we'll review the responses we had in late to make sure there's no additional items that we discussed and need to be added to those, so I think we're moving forward with that, the last meeting we had on drainage, was actually, we got the least number of responses so far, but we had the most vocal group in our meeting, and so I always think we're getting a lot of citizen input, and hopefully, city council will be happy with, hopefully completed project, completed update, we're gonna send to y'all for your review and discussion, and kick it back to us if you don't like something on itself.
Okay, thank you Mike, before we turn it over to city council, Bill, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
Well, I think there was a question, which is, it's probably, won't take a long time to go through, but just how the survey process has worked and how we're working, so next slide if you could Curtis, what I'm gonna do here, and again, we presented this to the Plating and Zoning, so I won't read this whole thing, but I just want to remind you that the goals of the survey is to broaden the public input process, and provide additional feedback, really for the town plan, not for the specific topics etc., but how we're gonna shape that town plan, and I think it has succeeded, it's one of the things that council has asked us to do, is to continue to survey citizens, we've used the Survey Monkey, we think that's gone unsuccessful, chairman already covered the presentation topic, he and Jean, next slide, I will say in terms of survey, I want to make sure we're clear on that, essentially what we have done is, we've really passed this on to Curtis, basically gather information by reviewing the 2010 Town Plan, take a look at any additional information that exists since then, and to pitch some draft survey questions, he sends it to me, I usually make relatively minor edits and revisions etc., we really did pass it on to Chairman Janson, he's made a number of changes, in one case, basically, rather than we did, started over again, it was good, we simplified it and it worked out well, we finalized that, we have a meeting if we need to, and then Curtis advertises it online, from Facebook, Nextdoor, iInfo, the website, etc., and so it's working pretty well, I think the largest number of responses we have exceed over 150, something like that, on one of the surveys and some of more or less, anyway, we do take those responses, including all the specific comments associated with that, and we include it into the chairman and the commissioners' packet as they go forward, they have access to that, I think there's another slide, and then we have the public hearing and the discussion, which the commissioners have the results of those surveys, and so forth, we will clean that up, and we'll provide an entire renewed packet to the chairman and to the commissioners, so they can see all the comments as we get to present where they're gonna finalize the town plan, so I just want to make sure we covered that, because I know there's some questions associated with that.
Okay, thank you Bill, before we begin our discussion, I'm gonna release the S M, YMSL, young men, thank y'all for coming out, we appreciate everything you do in the community, keep up the good work. Okay, we're now open for discussion, do we have any, Mike?
I have kind of a question, just curious, I know that you're using Nextdoor, iInfo, and Facebook, and we're getting people that are coming in on those, is there any way, or are we tracking where people are accessing the survey from, do we have a way of doing that, or are we doing that?
Not specifically, I mean, there's been emails, most of them have a link, and you go to a link which comes from our website, and then they take it online and associate with that, I did forget to mention also, we mailed out a postcard, a postcard went out to all residents, and right before the drainage survey came out, there wasn't a big bump in surveys associated with that, but I do think that it raised awareness and provided minimal copy they could refer back to.
Do we know if there's a way to, for some reason, track where the surveys are coming from, from Facebook, the only reason I'm saying, excuse me, is, it might be interesting to know who's looking at what media, and maybe that's where we need to focus who we're on, if a lot of them are coming through Facebook, or Nextdoor, iInfo, or postcard, I don't know if there's any way that we can track in the future, if there is, I don't think so.
Also, we sent out a lot of emails, I sent an email with links to the council, and well as all the commissioners, but ultimately, we're gonna click on the link, it's gonna take you to the survey, and then where that survey, I think it's, I don't know the answer, I don't think that there's a way we could do that unless you, and as we suggested, we're going to have feedback, she, Xena's already prepared it, so that when citizens come in at the public hearings, we're gonna ask some questions as to how did you hear about this, and there will be an opportunity for citizen input in terms of, how did you get the word of this meeting, how did you do all that, so we're gonna make it happen to do that, but it would totally be hard to...
Well, maybe just add on a survey, how did you, did you get it through Facebook?
We'll do that on the next survey.
Or something, just curious.
Okay, any other discussion?
I was just gonna say that, I think that's a great point about how to capture how people are getting information, and if you just ask them, as Alderman, Alderman, just asking on the survey, is easy thing to do, and you put some checks like you have here, and then a blank that says "other," and maybe they heard about it from a neighbor, or read about it in the roadrunner, and that helps you know what works, or what is working better, because it's like a constant drip, that people get information, you give them in variety of ways, and not everything works, but what I found at the Planning and Zoning meeting, the postcard, that's why so many people were there, everybody that I talked to, how did you hear about the meeting, we got a postcard, and that's why so many people were at the meeting, maybe didn't go back and fill out the survey, but they certainly knew there was a meeting and they showed up and got involved.
Thank you Mary Ann, anybody else?
Well, so, one add-on to that, so are we sending a postcard out for every survey, or just?
It was not our intent, we sent one out, and we're trying to time it to where it would be for the drainage and the municipal track.
Right, okay, and I heard you say the max we have is about 150, what was the average number of surveys we've had on all the, so far, has it been over 100 or so?
I'll give that to you, actually, pedestrian bikeway plans was 156, the Community Vision, which is our swats, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, 96, flooding and drains, 39, and residential, commercial development, 53 responses, so average maybe of 75.
Okay, anything else? Mike, thank you very much, please thank the Planning and Zoning Commissioners for all their very great, hard work, item 5.2, Discussion City Manager Update on the Status of the Via Bus Shelters on Days of Allah and La Ciel Soma, Bill, do you want to come forward, are you gonna talk as well, or are you just here to watch?
Just here to watch.
Just here to watch, okay.
Jeff, so...
Jeff, would you stand up so that everybody can see, Jeff is our Via representative.
And he does a great job.
And he does a great job.
He really does, takes care of all the suburban cities, and looks at our engine very reactive and responsive, so you'll recall, in September of 2016, council directed city manager to contact me about erecting rider shelters, and so in March, council actually approved the city manager agreement with Via, which we did in the summer, there was a delay, because the question came up in terms of what we were gonna do with the shelter that was programmed at Mont Hill, and in fact, there's a picture of it right here in this triangle here, and so part of the issue is, because Tech Dot hasn't figured out what they're gonna do with Mont Hill intersection, that if we built it and then we had to scrap it, that would not be, wouldn't make sense, so eventually we just said, okay, with that one hole, can we continue to move forward with the other two, so which is what's happened. I got a note from Jeff today, you're welcome to talk to him, Jeff, if you want to come up here, basically, he says that this morning he was briefed that the contractors are finalizing the pricing work, they've got one more job to complete, and then they anticipate, starting with Chavano Park, on the two shelters that will be located on Days of Allah, so earliest the contractors could begin working, it's middle of next week, that contractor's gonna be La Sal, affordable builders, and so here's a, it's not that one there, there's a picture of where it's gonna go, right outside of City Hall on Days of Allah, so you can see that there'll be an improvement on the side, so that the asphalt will, and concrete will support the way that the bus, the shelter there, I think, we'll go to the next slide there, that's the one on the corner, Days of Allah, La Ciel Soma, and there's also, gonna be a personalized Chavano Park, I think, logo on the top, I don't think we have that picture, but...
Yeah, that's the end.
Fair point, yeah, of course, that is...
I know, but why did we pick that location?
It's not there, we're not playing it there, should take that one out, we actually considered that one, but because of the improvements of Norfolk's... We actually considered that one, but because of the improvements of North Course Motor Highway and Ashley, there's more ridership on the other one, just, you know, 50 yards away. We're actually going to move there.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? Mike?
Will they be lighting?
Jeff, oh, do you know if they're going to be lighting?
I can give you an answer tomorrow. I know with our next-generation shelters deal, we've been incorporating slalit shelters in our stops. I know the future, and we can cast a bill. And that's a good example of project we did in the last year and a half, that's the shelter lighting, also the City of Kirby. It's something we're actually working with among our suburban member cities.
Thank you. But I believe that they briefed that there will be solar panels there to work that way.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. We're now going to go to item 6.3, Public Hearing Ordinance O2017-021, Amending City Code of Ordinances, Section 24-6, Signs to Comply with Texas Local Governmental Code, Section 216903, Regulation of Political Signs by Municipality. It is now 7:10. Bill?
So just to make sure we're clear, there's two separate items on signs. The first one is an ordinance, the other one's a policy, and the ordinance first, as the public hearing is on the ordinance. So just to remind you, on July 24th, 2017, city council directed the Planning and Zoning Commission to propose an amendment to the City Code of Ordinances, Section 24-6, which complied with the technical government code. And so that's essentially what has occurred. Planning and zoning, met a couple times. We briefed that in the first meeting. They've discussed this in two separate meetings. And ultimately, the Planning and Zoning Commission considered two options for the signed ordinance during voting periods. And so in your packet, there's option one, and then there's an ordinance, and then there's option two in the back there. We wanted to make sure that even though the Planning and Zoning Commission adopted one for a recommendation, there was a second one for your consideration. So ultimately, we staffed both versions of that through our city attorney's office. Both of them received support from the VIA attorney's office. There's advantages and disadvantages to both, but not materially. And essentially, both versions of this accomplished your task to give planning and zoning commission. I'll just kind of say that option two, because it's a disclaimer in broad terms, it says -- in fact, could you just go to option two real quick, Curtis, here? Option two leaves the signed ordinance exactly the same as a subparagraph six, which basically said, "All signs described in this section shall be regulated as prescribed unless otherwise stated herein, or otherwise specifically authorized by state law," it's a blanket, you know, catch-all. Option one, which is one that was about by planning and zoning, basically removes the constraint that says a sign shall be no larger than 24 square feet. And it basically offers another qualification. All signs described in Section 24-6 shall, in the aggregate, be no more than 36 square feet at any given time. Now, essentially, the issue that we had here in Shadow Park was that typical large sign is made, most people, from an eight-by-four sheet of plywood, which is 32 -- 36 square feet.
32.
32, I'm sorry, 32 square feet. And so because in our previous ordinance, we had a limitation, it said, you know, one sign should be larger than 24 square feet. Essentially, this is on regulating private property. Essentially, it's basically said if you had an eight-by-four, which is standard practice and use of a big sign, if you're using a big sign, then that sign would exceed what our ordinance allows. I can tell you that we didn't go measure the signs last year. This came up last year. If you recall, the early election period, we probably went about a month and a half with these signs, large signs out there. It was a number over the city. And then at the last minute, there was a blank. We measured the sign. And frankly, we're surprised that it was 24 square feet. And so then therefore, that caused friction, and the signs were removed. And essentially, consultation with the attorneys, obviously, we are in -- you know, our signed ordinance is not in accordance with the local government code. The local government code basically says you cannot regulate a sign unless it has an effective area greater than 36 square feet of political sign. So essentially, Texas Local Government Code says you can't regulate political signs that are 36 square feet or less. And that's the essence of this issue. The discussion in the Planning and Zoning Commission centered around the task the city council gave, which was to propose options which complied with the local government code. And then there was other discussion that said, yeah, but Texas Local Government Code doesn't comply with the recent Supreme Court ruling. Okay, so I've talked to Charlie, I've talked to Dan Corbett, and city's attorney position, and city staff position, that the city should adopt an ordinance which doesn't create a vulnerability in a situation where we could be challenged because we're not complying with the local government code. And then therefore, that could result in a lawsuit. For the purpose of the staff recommendation, it's not about what size sign we like or we don't like. It's what we think the city council should adopt while this inconsistency exists between the local government code and the Supreme Court ruling. That's the essence of it. We want to, in my mind, provide the safest recommendation for adopting an ordinance which would not create a situation where we could be challenged in our local codes, then we would adopt either option one or two. The City of Planning and Zoning Commission had recommended option one. And so I see some questions. I paused there.
Well, this is the public hearing section. This is one we're going to hear from our citizens, and we'll come back.
That's essentially the situation that citizens need one here.
Okay. Are there any citizen questions or comments that they would like to make at this time? If there are no citizen questions or comments, it's now 7:17. We're going to close the public hearing section of the meeting, and we're going to proceed to item 6.4. Discussion Action, Ordinance O2017-021, Amending City Code of Ordinance, Section 24-6, Signs to Comply with Texas Local Government Code, Section 216.903, Regulation of Political Signs by Municipality. Bill, do you have something else you'd like to add?
No, just talking.
Okay. We're going to open it up for discussion. Actually, do I have a motion to approve Ordinance O2017-021? Mike?
I would move that we approve the one that's in the packet, the option number one.
Option one.
I would differentiate that in the motion, but --
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second for Mary Ann. Okay, we're now open for discussion. Yes, Mike?
I'll give a little pandemic here. We're a type A general law city, which means that we can only do those things that the state statutes tell us we can do. We can't do things that the state statute tells us we can't do. Right now, our ordinances have contrention of what the state statute sets. Until it's overruled by a court of competent jurisdiction, that's the law. We need to comply with the law. And I think this resolution gets us out of the situation where we adopt an ordinance that's forbidden by the state, which we can't do as a general law city. So I would encourage my fellow alderpeople to vote in favor of this ordinance.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion, Mary Ann?
And maybe this is for our city attorney. Could I get an explanation of the difference between what planning and zoning, the option one, and the one that is recommended by the city attorney? How are they different? Why are they different? And why is the city attorney recommending option two?
Let me just highlight the differences, okay? This one here, which is the option two, basically says you can regulate the sign just like you have it, except for unless it's prescribed by state law. And so what the discussion occurred in the PNC was that you have to read the sign to know it's a political sign to enforce this. So the read on the PNC was that this is content-based, because you have to read it. So that's why they went to that one specifically. This is number two, because it's content-based. But it's broader, because it says, hey, you can do anything one unless it's regulated by the city. If you go to option one, Charlie can back you up on this.
Unless it's regulated by the state of Texas.
Hey, Texas, correct.
Yeah.
In option one, there's still some constraints here in that there are situations in which someone might have signs out there that still follow the Texas Local Government Code, but are not compliant with this. For example, it says 36 square feet. So if you have a 32-square-foot sign, and then you have 56 signs that are two-by-two, then you're exceeding the 36 square feet in the aggregate. In the aggregate. But the local government code says you can't, you still can't do that.
So the state law puts a city between a rock and a hard place, literally. Because state law says that you cannot regulate political signs unless they're greater than 36 square feet. If it's more than eight feet high, it's eliminated, or it has any living elements. This essentially says, means that you can pass a regulation that says that no political sign shall be greater than 36 square feet, shall not be greater than eight feet high, shall not be illuminated, and shall not have any living elements. That's how you can regulate it. Unfortunately, you have to read a political sign to determine whether or not it's a political sign. The Supreme Court has said, on a very basic level, that's unconstitutional. If you have to read the sign to determine how it's regulated, that's a violation of the First Amendment. Option one is not in compliance with state law, because it says that no sign may be erected more than 60 days prior to the start of the voting period. And state law says that with respect to a political sign, you're allowed to put it up anytime, no matter what. And so if someone puts up a political sign that exceeds the number of signs that are allowed on a residential piece of property, you can't make them take it down if it's political. I mean, it gets a little more complicated. Maybe you can make them take down another sign, but you're still making them take down another sign, because one of them is political. The other is the aggregate, no more than 36 square feet, because the statute says that it's not the signs in the aggregate, it's each sign individually. So technically, in a law, if somebody wanted to put 15 political signs in their front yard that were under -- that were all 24 square feet, they could do that under state law if it was a political sign, and they couldn't probably do that. So that's kind of the rock and a hard place we're in. So go to option two. So option two gives the city the flexibility to read the sign and say, oh, you're putting up a political sign that doesn't comply with this requirement. It's otherwise authorized by state law, so it's okay. That's why we prefer option two. Option one doesn't do that. Option one puts the city in a position where you're going to be forced to violate the law, in our opinion. And if an individual has the resources and the principles, I suppose, to bring suit, we think that's a problem. We think that it would be difficult to defend. This one, on the other hand, says that if it's a political sign, we get to read it. Oh, that's otherwise authorized by state law, so you can allow it to stay up. Which, in our mind, at least, puts us in compliance with state law.
But what does that do for the United States Constitution? What do -- you know, if you have to read it, to know it's a political sign, then --
No, I agree with that. But we have to read it in order to find out whether or not we're in compliance with state law, which is a little different, which is a little different scenario, right? We're not reading it to see if we're regulating it. We're reading it to see if state law allows it.
But --
We don't have to read it to regulate it. In other words, political signs, so long as they are, because effective area less than 36 square feet, less than eight feet high, they're going to be fine. I agree with you, Mayor. It puts us between a rock and a hard place, but this puts us in a least favorable position, in our opinion.
The first one was?
Option two.
Puts you in the least favorable position.
No, in the most favorable position.
Okay, that -- I understand that. So the question is, do we get sued by somebody who has principles, who wants to enforce state law? Or do we get sued by somebody who has the money to enforce the principles of the First Amendment, and that they're going to come after us for having this regulation?
Well, no. Well, first of all, I think there's less chance of being sued with this particular provision, because if someone wants to put up a political sign, a bunch of political signs in their yard, we can read it. We can say it's authorized, otherwise authorized by state law, and we're going to allow the sign to go up. And allowing the sign to go up, more often than not, is -- why would anybody sue us? Someone would have to sue us because they believe that we are regulating this, because they would have to believe that the state law is unconstitutional.
Okay.
I don't think we would be sued if someone came in, if someone put up a sign, let's say, whatever the number, total number of signs authorized is in the regulations on real property.
Up to 36 square feet.
No, not total number of signs, like four, right? Three? Three?
Three.
Three. And then their voting grades, three voting grades give this extra one, right? Okay. And so what I'm saying is that if somebody has three signs up in their yard, and then they put up a fourth that's a political sign, that meets the otherwise time, place, and manner requirements that are within our own regulations, and we say, you can't have that sign. And they say, well, it's a political sign, and under state law, you can't regulate political signs like that. You have to allow me to put it up. And then we go, okay, Section 6 says that all signs described in Sections 24-66 shall be regulated as prescribed unless otherwise stated herein, or otherwise specifically authorized by state law. So we go, oh, you're telling us it's a political sign that's otherwise regulated by state law. So we go to state law, we read it, and we go, oh, it is. So we allow you to keep that extra fourth sign up. Those people aren't going to sue us. They're going to put up their sign and be happy that they put it up.
Okay. Mike?
Point of procedure, I misunderstood the packet. I thought that the recommendation was option number one, so with --
It is. It is. It's still option number one, and this is my last caveat, and I'll be quiet, is because option one, although it didn't fully comply with the Texas Local Government Code, basically, if you're taking a look at what is happening in practice out there, you have typically one large sign of 32 -- 32 square feet, and this, in the aggregate of 36 square feet, which would allow that one sign, and probably two other signs out there, and that provides what PNC thought was a, basically a compromised solution that's going to allow these large signs, but still limit them to a degree associated with that. We solved the problem here in Shadow Park. That's why it went that way.
PNC recommended option number one. The city attorney's office recommends option number two. That's where the rest comes back to.
Okay. Michelle?
And I'm --
And I'd like to understand, I understand more as a general law case city. I understand that our law is contrary to what state law is, but then we still have the constitutionality of the Supreme Court. So I don't understand, first of all, why we need to do anything at the moment. I'd like to know what other cities are doing. I'd like to know if there have been other lawsuits already on this subject. Is it something that we need to be worried about right now?
Okay. So I guess that depends on your perspective. If you want to be in compliance with the Texas Supreme Court, the First Amendment, we think you need to change your sign regulations because as they stand there on the Constitution...
But the Supreme Court of the United States overrules us.
That's what I'm saying. The United States Supreme Court, based on the case law that came out, it's our opinion, your current sign regulations, as they exist, do not meet the standards set down by the Supreme Court. So you can either leave it in a way that legally is unconstitutional or change it. Our recommendations to all of our clients, we ask, is to, the simplest way to do it is to regulate all signs in a manner consistent with how the state regulates political signs, right? Because then it doesn't matter what the sign says, if it's political or if it's not political, it's all regulated exactly the same, all same time, place, and manner restrictions. That's the safest way to do it. Of course, that creates a policy question concern, right? It basically says that somebody can put up as many signs as they want in their front yard, so long as they're not greater than 36 square feet, not illuminated, don't have any living parts, and are not greater than 8 feet high. Practically, who puts up that many signs in their yard, quite honestly? But that's a policy decision for you all. The other thing we recommend is similar to what we're, to our clients, is what we recommend here, is that you put out whatever regulations you want to put out with respect to normal signs, and then you have this provision that says, except as authorized by state law. And state law authorizes political signs to be this other way. And so then we go, oh, okay, it's otherwise authorized by state law, so you can put that sign up. That's what we recommend. That's what most of our clients are going towards when they, admittedly, not all of them have the resources to start implementing their sign regulations, but it's been happening more and more people are changing it. It's just the, you know, the rock and a hard place that this legislature has put cities in, based on the current status of state law with respect to our authority to regulate political signs. Another option is to regulate all signs the way you want, and then have another section in your code, is another recommendation that we've made to our clients, that basically mimics state law. It says, we regulate all signs this way, except political signs, and we regulate political signs this way. And the reason we do that is because state law says that's how we have to do it. And if they get sued, well, then we bring the state into that lawsuit as well. And so far, it's worked because people don't complain because they're allowed to put up their political signs. Someone would have to complain that we are treating political signs differently than other signs to really get up the motivation to work this way. I hope that helps.
And if somebody does bring that suit, is there wiggle room in the Supreme Court opinion?
Well, not the way it reads now.
Okay. Anybody else have any discussion? Mike?
Is there a delay? I mean, there's no delay on the Supreme Court decision. When it came down, that just became the law of the land.
Yes, sir.
Therefore, I always understood that the Supreme Court decision was the law of the land, and it trumped everything.
Well, certainly, yes, that's exactly right. That law spells out how we're authorized to regulate. Yes, sir.
And so basically, we have a decision here to make. Are we going to essentially violate the Supreme Court decision and judge these signs by content under option two? Or allow everything to be done under option one? And, you know, any kind of sign you want, up to 36 square feet. Is that the way I understand it, in simple terms?
No, that's not my, that's not our firm's position.
No, no, he's not asking for your...
He's asking his...
He's saying, does option one say that you can put any kind of sign up in this 60-day period that has the limitations that are listed in option one? I think that's what you're asking. Is that correct, Mike?
Yeah, option one says that, but so does option two. Go to option two. And option, the problem with both options, well, they both do the same thing. Option one, go back to option one. The difference between option one and option two is option one is in compliance with state law.
Not in compliance.
Not in compliance with state law.
With Supreme Court.
With Supreme Court, not with state law. And so...
Say that one more time. Option two complies with...
Option one.
Option one complies with the Supreme Court.
Yeah.
But not with state law. Okay.
In my opinion, go to option two. Option two gives you the flexibility to comply with both state law, and it complies with the Supreme Court and gives you the option to comply with state law because of the language that says, or otherwise specifically authorized by state law. I personally don't think that if that language, that we then go, oh, state law says that if you have a political sign, that it's regulated this way, means that we are regulating based on content. It means the state is regulating based on content. We're just going, oh, that's a political sign, and the state regulates in a different way, so we're going to allow it. It's a real, you know, but I think it's an important distinction, distinguishing. It's very important.
And the way that it distinguishes is kind of in the favor of the property owner, such that if there's an issue...
They get to put up the sign.
They get to put up the sign. And so what person is going to then sue the city if they're given the right to put up the sign? And then it becomes the issue of how many signs and how many people in the city are going to be putting up a bunch of signs. It's usually going to be dictated by people with a lot of kids who may be playing sports or are involved in band, or, you know, they've got the signs that, my daughter goes to Clark and plays volleyball, and say they've got three or four kids, and they want to put the signs up. That's different from the political signage. But in my view, I recognize there's an issue with the Supreme Court case law, yet we've got a statute on the books in Texas that tells us, this is the law in Texas. Until we have a court of competent jurisdiction to tell us from where or the other, yes, we're supposed to comply with the Supreme Court case, but we also don't have a justiciable issue. There's nobody coming and saying, I am going to sue the city. So it's kind of, I'm just going with the safest. The city attorney has adopted an option that kind of gives them what they would want, and I don't, you guys help me out. Why shouldn't we go with that?
That's option two.
That's option two.
Mike?
Based on that, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would like to change my motion with the second amendment.
Okay. Mary Ann will accept it as a friendly amendment of the original motion without...
Sure.
Okay. So we're talking about option number two, and that is the motion that is on the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. You know, the problem that I have with what you just said, Charlie, is that the entire foundation of this lawsuit had to deal with the church having its speech that they put out, and that the city said, well, there are preferred types of speech, but the church was not participating in the preferred class of speech. And the Supreme Court came in and said, hey, you can't pick winners and losers. And what you're suggesting is, we are picking winners and losers.
No, we're not. The state is picking winners and losers.
But we're adopting the state's rules.
No, we're not. We are saying, we're saying, these are our rules, but if the state says otherwise, we're going to comply with state law. That's what we're saying, which is a different legal argument than what the Supreme Court dealt with. In your instance, it was the city who was making, who was picking the winners and the losers and making those choices. In this case, we're not. We're saying, this is how we're going to deal with signs. If you want to put up, you know, four signs that say whatever they want, or three signs that say whatever they want, and you're free to do so. But if it's a political sign that is otherwise authorized by state law, and you put it up, and we go to enforce it, and you say, hey, this is a political sign that's otherwise authorized by state law, we'll go, oh, it is. Okay, the state law is picking the winners and the losers. And I'd much rather go to court with that argument than, that's a much better legal argument, in my opinion.
If you want to enforce it. Michelle?
And this means that in all HOA neighborhoods, which have their own rules and regulations on signs or whatever, they still have to comply with this as well? Everyone does?
Yeah, everyone does. Even if, assuming the HOA restriction is less restrictive than our local regulation, they would have to comply with a more restrictive city regulation. If it is, if the HOA restriction is, regulation is more restrictive, they would have to obviously comply with their own HOA regulations.
Mike, go ahead.
I don't think that the person who wants to have the signs is going to have the problem. It's the neighbors that'll have the problem.
Yeah, maybe. I mean, you know better than I, how many political signs go up in somebody's yard? I mean, I don't know. I can tell you in the city of Broffels, everybody has one, you know, one. Here's what I see in the city of Broffels and other communities where I drive by. At most, a residential home has like three signs at any given time. For sale sign, my daughter's a cheerleader at the middle school, and, you know, vote for X. And they're all, real estate signs, sizes are smaller. Practically, it seems to me, and it's your policy decision, but practically, it seems to me, most people don't want to see their front yard cluttered up with a bunch of signs.
True.
Okay. Mike?
And that's what we're talking about here, by the way. Signs on real, real property.
Probably not government.
Mike Coleman?
I think there is government.
They're both the same. One and two are both the same in that regard. In that regard, they're both the same, so it doesn't matter, option one or option two.
That's correct. We think that option two gives you the flexibility to let the state pick the winners and losers and puts us in the best position, A, for not getting someone impeached, B, at least winning a city's letters from a standpoint of what we're regulating. Because we're not regulating political signs, the state is.
Okay. As far as the regulation, and to follow on to Michelle's earlier questions about the communities, you know, we're not in a position to ask the attorney general for an opinion, but there are many communities out there that are represented by many different legislatures in the House and the Senate. Have you been approached, or have you approached any of your cities about getting their legislatures to secure an attorney's general's opinion?
No, nobody's asked us to do that. I can tell you that the state of Texas did get sued for their sign regulations along with their affairs, and they lost, and they had to revise their regulations. Nobody's challenged this particular statute. Quite honestly, I don't know that anybody will. And the reason why I don't think anybody will is because it allows you to put up as many signs as you want within a certain amount of restrictions, political signs. I just don't see anybody challenging that state law unless the city challenges it, quite honestly.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Okay, we have before us ordinance O-2017-021, option two, which has been, which is the one that's currently on the floor after the modification of the original motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Okay, the motion carries. This is our first reading. Item number 5.6, Discussion, Action, Resolution R-2017-018, Amending City Policy Number 11, Signs on City Property to Be Consistent with Ordinance O-2017-021. Bill?
Yeah, Mayor, this is the second half of that. At the same meeting in July, city council also directed staff to propose amendments to the city's sign policy, which is policy number one. But no specific guidance given on that. And again, I just recall that in July, actually in August, September, and October, PNC has met, they proposed the amendment to decide on what you just acted on, and planning zoning commission did not work on this policy, the staff worked on this. So you'll see that in your, in your packet, because we didn't know which way you were going to go, we have a number of options associated with this. And just remember the background behind this, since there were five different 8x4 signs in city hall last year, and because our sign policy prohibited signs that were greater than 6x6, and these were 8x4, the 8 exceeded the 6, then those five signs were not in compliance with our sign policy. Those were taken down. This differs a little bit because local government code regulates political signs on private property, but does not regulate political signs on public property. City hall does public property, and the sign policy is oriented strictly on the signs that would be related to public property. Again, as I stated in your packet, the city attorney has concluded that this current sign policy, number 11, is not in violation of the Local Government Code. However, to be consistent, that's what council chooses to do on city property, we have provided three options for your consideration. Option one, which would be to limit size to 32 square feet, and 32 square feet was selected because an 8x4 is 32 square feet. Option two would be to limit a sign to 36 square feet, to 6x6 or something to that nature sign, which really, in practical, in practical application, I've never seen a 36-square-foot sign. The local government code says you can't regulate 36, and we picked 36 because it matched local property. The third option was to aggregate the limit to limit the size to 36 square feet in the aggregate, so you could have a 24-square-foot sign, you could have 12 more, you could have a 32 plus four more, you could have any number of signs on government property here that didn't exceed 36. That would have matched for option one of the previous, previous ordinance. So you have a number of courses of action. You can give me one of those three, or you can, your own size.
Okay. Do I have a motion concerning Resolution R-2017-018, Amending the City Policy Number 11, Signs on City Property to Be Consistent with Ordinance O-2017-021? Mike?
I would move adoption with the conclusion of no sign maybe larger than 32 square feet. So option one, I believe.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we're now open for discussion. Do we have any discussion?
I'd like to ask, what's your reasoning behind the 32?
Because that's generally the size of the largest sign that's 32.
Which is the 8x4.
Four by eight, yeah.
Four by eights.
Any other discussion?
And does this, does this limit how many?
Our sign ordinance limits three already.
So we're not changing that?
Our sign policy, our sign policy on public property, the total number of three.
And we're not changing that? We're just focusing on size. Is that correct?
That's all that we consider.
So we're proposing having three signs that are eight times the size of most signs that show up on the municipal track. Is that what we're suggesting? Which really turns into 96 square feet. Okay.
So with that, so you're...
So you're saying that would be three eight-by-four?
Three eight-by-fours.
Well, my take on this is that we have had a lot of... I have personally had a lot of complaints and feedback regarding the size of signs. And I know that when we passed this ordinance on the number of signs a few years ago, we got a lot of positive feedback on just having three. Because I know for one election several years back, we had so many signs on the property, and they glued into the northwest military, they caused issues, and it looked terrible. I mean, quite frankly, it looked terrible. And I think the bigger the signs, the worse it looks. And I think the feedback that I've gotten from our constituents, and I've gotten it from many, many people, is don't allow giant signs on our properties, on our government property. And so I am not in favor of a larger sign.
Okay. Michelle? Okay. Mike?
I guess I misunderstood the original. I thought we always could have three large signs up to 36 square feet, or 32 square feet, or 24 square feet. Now, that was the original one. They changed it and reduced it to three signs at city hall from any number of...
Yes.
So we always could have it. So we really aren't changing anything that is there now. They can still have three signs, correct?
Six-by-six maximum, right?
Thirty... I think it's 36 square feet. We're just saying now it's 32 square feet.
But it's eight feet tall by four feet wide.
Eight feet long by four feet. So I... Mike, if we do nothing, then we can still have three six-by-six square signs, correct? Under the current ordinance?
Correct.
Yes.
Four-by-six.
No?
Four-by-six. Four-by-six.
I thought it was four-by-six.
Four-by-six was 24 square feet in the signed ordinance. Sign policy says no sign may be greater than in size than six-by-six. In practice, they're eight-by-four, which is 32 square feet. The eight exceeds six, so therefore it's a violation of six-by-six. It didn't say six-by-six, it didn't say 36 square feet, it says six-by-six.
Yes.
Okay, that's 36 square feet.
It is.
And what I'm saying is, under the current ordinance, we can have, if somebody wanted to have three six-by-six signs, it's perfectly legal, correct?
Under that policy.
Okay. So basically, all we're saying now is we're prompting it down from 36 square feet to 32 square feet. Correct?
That's the motion.
Yes.
Well, I mean, that's from the motion. Okay. My position on that is, I agree with Mr. Heinzfeldt, that, you know, I don't like the big signs either, but when we add the policy that was there, it's going to be a whole lot easier for city officials and everybody to look at a sign that's four-by-eight and judge it's legal than to come out and have to keep measuring six-by-six signs.
That doesn't mean that you can't go to four-by-four or two-by-two. You can adopt anything that you want to, because the policy is before the council to adopt a revision of this existing policy. So if you like a different number, you can adopt a different number. Mike has suggested four-by-eight, and somebody else could suggest a different size.
Can I ask?
Michelle?
Bot Hines, if you have a suggestion on size?
I'd like to go smaller. What's the size of... What's our normal size, signs, or...
24?
24. Is it 24? Four-by...
Four square feet.
Four square feet, right? Okay.
Is a four-square-feet more akin to like a realtor's sign?
Yes.
Yes.
And the yards of the kids, for the cheerleader football, that sort of thing.
So are we saying that... Nothing bigger than that is what y'all are proposing? Y'all don't want anything bigger than that?
At city hall, because we can only regulate it on city hall. I'd like to regulate it everywhere, according to residents, but...
Okay, the microphone, please, Michelle.
It's an important... I think it's an important difference. This is... You're not adopting ordinance, so you're not regulating anything. This is property in your home, and as the city, you have the right, from a policy standpoint, to determine what you're going to allow and what not. So you're not regulating anything, you're just determining, from a policy perspective, how you want signs to be on city property.
Thank you. Michelle?
I just asked about branding a political sign. There was one that was put out earlier. I think it's probably bigger than two-by-two. If you're going to consider something, you should know what the standard sign size is.
That's what I'd like to know.
Otherwise, you're going to get to the same assumption that we thought 24 was 32.
Because like, Mary Ann, my signs are two-by-three. My real estate signs.
So the motion that's on the floor, though, is a sign as long as that last panel?
Yeah.
As big as that panel, or four-by-eight. Well, the original was four-by-eight.
Those are 18.
So that's...
Those are 18, yeah.
That's 18 by...
24.
The 24?
Yeah.
18 by 24.
So two-by-two, four square... It's less than four square feet?
Yes. That would be my amended proposal, is to go with that.
I would read that as a motion to substitute to be, instead of eight-by-four, to be two-by-two. Okay, do I have a motion to... Do I have a second on the motion to substitute to two-by-two?
I have a second.
We have a motion to substitute. Now, we're now going to talk about the motion to substitute. Do I have any discussion concerning the motion to substitute? Mike?
I don't understand why we're all of a sudden going to one-third of what we traditionally authorize. I put in a Public Information Act request for any complaint on signs, and it came back that there were none that could be given, or none that were found. So I've heard absolutely no objection to them. I'm really... We're talking about a short period of time. We're talking about political speech. I think we need to accommodate our candidates and let them make their speech rather than stifling it on the city property. So I would urge my aldermen not to vote for this amendment.
Michelle?
I will say that there actually are two residents that live on your street who called and complained to me, in addition to many others who called and complained about giant signs. So there has been a lot of discussion about it. It just hasn't obviously maybe been reported or recorded here.
Okay. Mike? Mary Ann, I'm sorry, I didn't see the motion.
I know that we have had at least one resident come and speak at Citizens to be heard to talk about it. And it is something that, however you feel about it, it's something that the city can do. It doesn't interfere with an individual homeowner's right to put something on their property. And, you know, we hear all the time about, please come to city council and tell us what you all want, rather than talk to us individually. But I too have received calls and emails about the size of signs at city hall. So all I can do is relate, at least one person did come and tell us. And I have yet to hear anybody come up to say, have the signs big.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion? Mike?
I'm not in favor of the big signs at all. I mean, I like what Al Heinzfeldt's suggesting, but I just, you know... I don't want to make it problematic, especially in the general elections, because you're going to be pulling signs down. They're going to be pulling signs down all the time, because they're just going to stick them up. You know, they don't ask. We pull down the bad signs all the time, where they put too many. If we dropped it too low, I don't know. I don't really know the answer, to be honest with you. I guess it's probably better to run it even lower, because if you're near the way, it would be to keep it like 32 square feet. I really, if there's any three, I think that's too big.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I'll just...
Oh, Bob, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'll just reiterate. I've had many calls and many personal conversations with many people regarding the signs. And it's just the fact that people do not want large signs. And as to Mike, your comment, I don't... Because it's on city property and it's right here accessible, I see what you're saying, but I think it's fairly easy to maintain that, the few that are going to be put up. I think our staff can handle that. But I know the citizens will appreciate this decision if we make it. Countless number of people tell me that they wish we had fewer signs and less larger signs.
Okay. Okay. Anything else? So we have a motion to substitute to reduce the size of signs at city hall by, to one-ninth of the current size, which would be two-by-two. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
The motion carries. Now, we're going to vote on the primary motion to approve Resolution R-2017-018, Amending City Policy Number 11: Signs on City Property to be Consistent with Ordinance O-2017-021. The new motion is to be a four-square-foot, two-by-two sign. Do we have any further discussion on the substitute motion, which is now the primary motion? Okay? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
The resolution carries. Item 6.6, Presentation, Discussion, Update on Upgrade of Audio-Vision Infrastructure in the City Hall Council Chambers to Support the Implementation of a Public Access Channel. Bill?
In July, the council made council approve Resolution 2017-009, which was the city's communications strategy. And that strategy included city building improvements of the city building with the implementation of a future public access channel. During the 2017-2018 budget process, and ultimately in September as well, city council approved a budget line item of $36,000 of PAC fees, PAC funds, to upgrade the audiovisual infrastructure of the city hall chambers to support the implementation of a future public access channel. As you know, there's a number of challenges with how we present, how we project, how we record, and how we do a number of things associated with that, with the city hall and the current challenges. And so we've identified a number of things, potential improvements associated with that. I'm going to let Curtis come up here in a minute to talk about that. I just want to summarize that it was our hope that we would have a bid proposal out, we would get the bids, we would be able to grade them at this time, and we would be presenting a solution associated with that. In fact, in September, we sent bid specifications out to four different companies. Curtis backed with those companies, and we really only received bids from three companies. Only one of them was to standard, the other two didn't follow the instructions properly. And ultimately, I made the decision, let's not bring for action to city council the specific proposals, but this afforded us an opportunity to review the key aspects of the bid proposal, to get, you know, guidance or steerage and see what your comments were. And we will follow up with that, and I'm going to bring Curtis out here. The one thing that I know has come to light also is assisted living, assisted hearing devices associated with disabled folks that may not be able to hear. We're doing a better job of talking to the mics and doing that. These improvements that Curtis proposes will do a significantly better job associated with that. But the assisted hearing devices are not included in that, because that's outside the purview, we think, would be used for the PAC funds associated with that. So you're not going to see that when Curtis comes up, but it's on our radar, and we are going to explore that, and we're going to bring it back at a subsequent time for council consideration, hearing, assisted hearing devices. So Curtis, if you want to come up and you want to kind of describe what it is, our basic concept is, and how we're approaching this.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Good evening. Well, I'll have you run through this pretty quickly. So number one, one of the big problems with recording and then why it's not quite as crisp as a true HD, because there's limitations with laptop being able to do the... play videos, do PowerPoint and everything, and also record 1080p. So we wanted to see, have one with that camera, because it's only three years old, and it's perfectly good equipment, and it can record at 1080p, but we want a dedicated capture device. So the laptop would be handling the PowerPoint and inputs and such like that, but there's a dedicated device that is running, that is recording our audio course, our audio input. Second will be, I went back and forth with wireless and wired. I learned a lot in talking with all these companies. Audio and visual, I'm not an expert, have a huge background in that, and there's serious limitations with wireless, and I think we should stick with wire. The main limitation is that the average lifetime battery life is about six hours. With a speaker that speaks heavily, it'd be about three hours. We do have council meetings, we do have other meetings that do last more than three hours. And there are certain speakers, like I'm city manager, who might be speaking on the microphone.
And the mayor.
The mayor.
And if their mic is a die towards the other meeting...
They might actually like that.
Yes. That could be a big problem. They're also much more expensive, and a lot of the... Some companies even brought up the fact, there are so many wireless signals, and they're losing spectrum, and it's becoming more and more difficult to guarantee that you can have 12 different wireless microphones all communicating when you have 50 people in here, all those cell phones. And they were bringing problems with churches and other events, where everything's working great, you fill it up with 100 people, all have their cell phones, all have their tablets and everything else, and then all of a sudden, the wireless microphones start getting sad, start getting interference. Moving on, I just said improved microphone quality and podium, when I told these companies. It's not acceptable...
Really have to get this close to really be able to hear what someone's saying.
There should be a more comparable speaking distance. Some companies say, because these speakers are very old and that's all, if you replace the speakers, that will solve most of your problems, you improve the audio rack. You don't have to fix the actual microphone. Other companies say, yeah, change the microphone, but it's not a huge cost, but regardless, improve, ensure that the podium microphone quality is improved. Number four, replace all these existing ceiling speakers, because they're all JBLs. That one is disconnected, doesn't work.
Hey, they're only 20 years old. I don't know what you're talking about here.
I should say that most of the microphones paged to this construction building, and some have said that it looks like it's even older, like there's...
No, that's what I'm saying, they look like 20-year-old speakers.
Number five, we'll upgrade the audio mixer, amplifier, receiver as needed. Companies have different packages they're proposing, and whatever is compatible, remains compatible with our camera, and can still capture everything on it. I'm not super specific on what audio mixers they recommended. The projector is number six. And again, this isn't in particular order of everything on that first eight, I'm confident we can get with $36,000. Nine through 11, I guess should have said at the start, are, if we have room in the budget, it'd be nice to have, or nice to grab, or nice to achieve. So the projector, it's old, and it's not a super sharp image. We can jump forward 20 years in projector technology without occurring a huge cost to get brighter image. There'd be tons of advantages to it. Electronic wall screen, instead of just projecting on painted back wall, we'd actually have a proper screen. There should be less interference with lights. We have three lights, not operational, behind you to try and get it so that the projection can be viewed from the audience and recorded. And then five display monitors, a solid bias. So that way... And then, five display monitors, a solid diaphragm, so that way, you don't have to turn around to see what's being presented, you can see in the diaphragm what's being presented.
Who's not going to get one? Is that for the mayor?
It's the mayor again.
The mayor doesn't get it.
The problem when we talk about these companies is that this room is static, but we constantly are changing how we configure it. So there's five at Council, there's nine at P&amp;Z, then Council, one night and 10 minutes will move down and arrange for 12 speakers with six staff people and the six on Council. So, we need a system that's able to change relative to cookie. If we're able to get six monit, the reason why it's five is because there's five roughly straight components of the diaphragm.
So it's Mike Colmere that doesn't get one. Just checking.
He's going to move.
So, with this current, we're currently sitting, yes, that will be shared. I'll share.
I was about to say, I could see us sharing too, but I mean, you don't need a panel in front of every, if it's a presentation, it's a static presentation, but I think where you're looking, if you're looking at what we do on the iPad, you need to move around, that's a different story. But to me, if you share it with someone else, I think you'd get away with three or four monitors.
But they probably need five because they got to have at least that many for P&amp;Z because there's nine of them.
Can't you go to six? Can't you go to six?
If we, yeah. There's a lot of space when you take those bottom panels for a lot of wires to run, so I don't think there's a limitation in that. It's a cost limitation, every monitor adding more wiring, if we're able to report it, certainly.
What size monitors are you talking about?
It'd be very big.
I'm thinking about 11 to 14-inch. So, your iPads are 11-inch screens, so iPad to a small computer monitor.
Well, Mike Simpson and I are getting a little bit older, but 14 sounds better than 11.
Well, again, you, there's a limitation of how much width you have, and not ledge, and it would.
We can show you in general settings how to increase the text size.
I have it in diaphragm, I can assure you. One company did propose, they didn't follow a lot of stuff, but they proposed 22 inches monitors, but that was going to require some carpenter to come in and probably make some cuts to reset setting. We can do that, I just want to make sure it's a good carpenter because obviously, this is a very nice setup. I'm not going to trust an electrician at that, you know, if you have a carpenter. And then the last option is a boom shotgun mic, and shotgun mic is the industry term, but the idea during Town Hall settings. The microphone, they can capture a lot of speakers without having to come up to the diaphragm to record it. That's not incredibly expensive. To be honest, many of the companies do try to steer me away from going shotgun mics. They say their main setup for outdoor speaking events, they're not the best for what you're trying to achieve. They really recommend just take one of your wired mics and get a nice stand, maybe two or three of them, and set them up around the room, and people can, but I have to walk across the room and come up to my front end of the road, or on that side of the room. Which, that's not costly, so.
You mean, instead of coming, it's citizens to be heard or whatever, at the podium?
Like at a Town Hall type thing, where it's a little more informal?
Oh, okay.
And it comes to me, yes, it makes some logical sense that it's controlled, you know, if you want to come to the diaphragm.
Because at Town Halls, we make them do that, too.
What about, you know, the mic, you have two or three mics that you just hand out to citizens.
Wireless.
Wireless mic, it's not clipped on, but you see it at all the conferences, and during that, we would just have two, and then if someone was on that side, they would pass it around, or I think that's something people do.
Okay.
The, I think the reality is that there are times when, for example, Chief of Police or Fire Chief will have to stand up, and sometimes they're just giving an explanation, not necessarily coming to the diaphragm, so you want to be able to capture what's said. The via, the individual from via, didn't come up to the diaphragm. So, anybody that's watching this video later is not going to hear a word he said. And so, I think it's to capture.
Number 10, just continuing, the noise cancellation for Council of Council. That's standard technology to use, from my understanding, and in the head-up offices, while you don't hear the conversations and noise in the room next to you. They're not super expensive, you can install them in a wall, and it's just a white noise condenser, sounds kind of like an AC, it's been describing to me, and it just would prevent noise from the rear passing of the council chamber and vice versa. And number 11, final is a camera pantel zoom, that one's a stag image, can't manipulate it unless you got a ladder to manipulate it. This will actually, this would have a probably preset settings where you could manipulate it, you can have a zoomed-in shot, and if we were able to fit that in budget, I'd probably move this stag to there, and then you've got a stag shot, speaker looking at the face without the back of the head.
Oh, so you don't want to keep that camera there?
That would replace with a pantel zoom, to get hand to certain speakers on the Council. You can, from my understanding, you can set lots of presets, I can preset to every individual person as you're speaking, and you just have preset one, preset one, two, three, four, and it moves the camera automatically. And the static shot, my, we have good camera footage, because of the size of the room and pantel zoom take care of most things, but let's get a nice shot of the speaker face forward. So, we have a tech staff coming to present or some other very important presentation, the person watching the video on YouTube can see them actually talking rather than that.
So they'll see them talking, but then that, there will be a camera there as well doing what the presentation is? Or not? Because you think if somebody's standing there talking, there's a presentation, they're going to want to see the presentation rather than the speaker.
The first part, the dedicated new capture device, many of those allow you to incorporate the PowerPoint into the video, or when you record it and put it on YouTube, you can have the PowerPoint integrated into the video. All right. Any questions?
Yeah, I got one on. On the microphone, since we have to get, you know, real close, and you were talking about a comfortable distance, is there any of them, I've been involved in some deals in the past where we had, actually had headset and a microphone, piece of metal, or you needed to speak, you know, you would hit your, your pickel, would that be something that would be an option for, say, just at least for the council members, rather than having to do all this?
So, wireless microphone setup.
They weren't wired, they weren't wireless, they were actually wired, we actually did it to hit a button to, you know, get to speed.
If, when I've seen, when I've seen the wireless systems, remember wireless mics would need the charging and the battery, the batteries and everything?
These weren't, these weren't wireless that I'm talking about, these were wired, I mean, I've said it before, but they were wired, it's fairly old technology, it's been 15 years since I've been involved in it.
Mike, let me ask a question of Charlie and Bill. When we went and met with Senator Campbell and the other people from the Senate, I think they all had basically wired microphones, didn't they? They didn't, none of them had portable electronics, yeah. So the state of Texas is still using this antiquated technology of, you have to get, you know, of course, their microphone was, they could be this far away and it was hot, instead of, I got to get forward to that comfortable or uncomfortable distance.
Do any of them use a lapel, wired lapel microphone? Do you?
None of the, not in the Senate.
Because I was thinking, I mean, we don't move a lot on this diaphragm, but if you had something that was closer here, and a better speaker system, it seems like that would be, but I don't know if that's used or not. Is that, is that a possibility, too? Or not something to look at?
You know, with the wired microphone system, the diaphragm will be recomputed so that you have the audio jack right in front of you.
Right.
So you can, you can take your, it says as long cable, you just plug in your, this sure might not be wrong, but there's no reason why we, maybe not right now, or later, we could get, you know, different microphones that are making more comfortable, as long as they're physical connections, plugged into the jack, and I don't see a limitation to a different microphone.
Curtis and Bill have made several recommendations, are there any objections that people have to the direction that they provided us concerning the audiovisual plans that they have, that Curtis has presented today? There were some modifications by Bill, but other than that, is there anything else? Okay. Curtis, thank you very much, you did an excellent job. Item 6.7, Discussion Action Resolution R 2017-019, approving a grant application with the Alamo Area Council of Governments for Regional Solid Waste Program Grant for Disposal of Hazardous Material Waste. Bill?
So, in September, the Alamo Area Council of Governments announced a solid waste management grant opportunity, and we're like, wow, okay, so we did some research on that, and we haven't participated in the past. So, this money is distributed from TSCQ, there's about $158,000 available, and there's an application process which we had to go through. And so, again, I just, we've kind of talked about this, and you've seen some of the recycled survey results, but there was a number of comments in the survey results about, okay, what do I do with hazardous material? Because the public services themselves do not have a service which they provide dealing with hazardous materials. What we've done, and we've advised residents, because Bear County has a program which can be used, there's been some folks that have taken advantage of that program. But again, you might also recall that that program expired, that it was defunct for a while, and then they brought it back, and we put a number of articles, but it's not, doesn't seem to be real effective. So anyway, we thought, wow, this would be a good opportunity to offer a service, and we're through, you know, the recycle, the electronics recycle that we do, the battery cycles we've done, we've done paper recycle, shredding, and it's kind of that theme that we've done during Arbor Day, but so forth. So, we went ahead and did the initial grant application process, it's not complete, requires a resolution and City Council's approval. So that's what this is about today. We proposed a grant, a resolution, which would be the City Council's approval of that authority, and it would be the last step associated with that. We did some coordination with the public services, they don't actually themselves provide that, they have a subcontractor, which is Stereol Cycle and Environmental Solutions, they have agreed to a pass-through so that they would allow us to, they would incur no profit associated with that, it would be a pass-through cost based upon whatever the subcontractor gave. We selected an amount of $12,000, which would allow approximately 4,000 pounds of hazardous waste material associated with that. There might be more that's out there, but the thing that we looked at was, there's a number of cities competing for the $158,000, and we didn't want to come in with a large amount for $25,000, and that would probably, would be hard for them to approve the harness further wealth. We also looked at what are some of the other, the amounts that were provided by other cities. I don't think I heard that in here, but they've done some other hazardous waste material collections, and the costs were all under $12,000. Now, the category of that was, it was their second or third recycled event, and there may have been more initially. So this is not really scientific, it's based upon collaborations with Republic, looking at two or three other cities that did it, and still thinking we can go out and secure this grant. So, we're asking for approval of the grant application by resolution, which we would have submitted to the ACOG. If you have any other questions and information, obviously, it would be a whole campaign, an information campaign linked to this. We'd like to do it in conjunction with Arbor Day, which is now scheduled on April 21st, probably, apparently that's the only day that they're already committed to doing something, especially as we'd be looking at the week before that, or maybe two weeks before that. But it would still all be part of that Arbor Day, Environmental Friendly Campaign, Information Campaign, we would have. So, again, approval of the resolution, approving the grant.
Okay. And just for clarification, for people who might be watching, they're going to hear that CPS is having a pickup for hazardous materials, that doesn't apply to any of us that are in, that are not in the city of San Antonio, that is limited to the city of San Antonio, because if it were available to us as CPS customers in the greater Bear County area, then none of us would need this.
Well, that's correct for sure, if we're in San Antonio, and.
It's based on whether you have a CPS bill.
Yeah, so I have a CPS bill, and I think my memory is correct, I have to take this little pick, and I have to show my bill, and I have to take it and drive somewhere. This proposal would be a collection site at City Hall, we could break it here and break it in.
Okay. Okay, do we have a motion? Okay, my honesterman has made the motion, Michelle Ross is second in the motion, do we have any discussion? There's been no discussion? Oh, Marianne?
Just to be clear, this doesn't cost the city any money?
No, this grant would be fully funded of $12,000.
And we're not, we're not spending any tax dollars?
No. I'll just say, with our experience with the recycling last year, we had a tremendous number of people asking if they could bring up these types of materials. I think what we're going to find is probably a good thing that it's not on the day of our Arbor Day celebration, and it sounds like it might be a week or two prior to, we could still promote it. That 4,000 pounds will go real quickly in the city of Shemler Park, and I have a feeling we're going to be talking about this next year, trying to expand the program, and trying to figure out a bigger grant, or hopefully not spending tax dollar, but figuring out solutions. But I can tell you, there was a tremendous amount of interest in these types of materials. So, I think it's a great idea.
Okay. Mike?
Is it, it says solid waste, is it, will it include like paint and insecticides and things like that, or are we talking about if it's just solid waste?
Hazardous.
Hazardous. T bees, refrigeration.
Well, it's solid. I mean, you know, paint or insecticide.
But does that include? Yeah, and oil and.
Oil, does it include that or not?
Paint type for using.
Should be.
I believe it includes liquids as well as.
Freon, like refrigeration.
Regional solid waste is made a grant program, hazardous waste material, one sub-section.
So what he said was, yeah, solid waste is the entire program, hazardous waste is one section of that, and so that those materials you mentioned would be collected.
Okay. Because there is a program, because I've used it, I can't remember, I think Michelle knows where it is, where you can.
The county.
It's the county where you can call and they'll, you know, give you a date, and they'll send you a collection stag, but they'll only send you one, and you can start 10 gallons and buy batteries and stuff like that, but that can be done any time.
We've advertised that in the newsletter before.
Yeah.
All right, I assume you said solid waste.
And they mentioned it at ACOG in the past. You know, Bob, you were talking about people coming up during Arbor Day and asking about this, and you were talking about having this two weeks in advance, are we, do you think that it would be better to have this follow Arbor Day, to where people can come up and ask about it, and we say, hey, no, the hazardous stuff's next week, it's not during Arbor Day? So that people have their questions, they're trying to do their recycling, they're thinking of this, and the environmentally friendly answer is, we're not mixing the two?
So, that would, I think your obligation is there. My only concern is, I don't want to advertise it, advertise it, advertise it, and then within two hours, we're shutting. I mean, I think this is, you know, this is a good first step.
I think, I think an example of that was the prescription program we did this year, and we absolutely inundated in a positive way in a matter of several hours, far more than I know the chief ever expected we would get, and, which was a great thing. So, I would agree with that, I think it would be good, however, I don't think we can accommodate that volume with 4,000 pounds if we promote it that much. I think we need to kind of try to pull it off this year, and then we're going to have to evaluate how it goes and see what we need to do for next year. I think it's a great idea, I just watch what you ask for.
Okay. Okay. Do we have any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, the motion carries. Item 6.8, Discussion Action, City Manager's Fiscal Year 2017-2018 Performance Objections. Mike?
We adopted goals and objectives for the city, the city manager's asked to make them so, and this program would allow the city, allows the city manager to say, okay, I understand that everything you've said here are my priorities for the year, and it gives us the opportunity to say, yes, those are our priorities for the year for you too, and realize that some of the goals and objectives are aspirational, some of them are non-fail, and so this gives him the opportunity to speak to us and us to affirm to him. There's an additional value here, because I think once he's given, once we've approved these, his plate's pretty full. And so when we start coming up with good ideas to give him more work to do, then he can come back and say, okay, here's all the stuff you told me to do, now you want me to do this, tell me what you don't want me to do anymore, or we can do that for him. So I've talked with Bill about this, this, and, you know, we're both Army guys, we understand performance objectives and getting them approved and then working towards them, and I think it would be a real good, it would definitely give him direction in the absence of city council meetings, and it gives us the ability to, it gives us something much more concrete than what I saw last year in our evaluation of the city manager. So he's given us what he thinks are the no-fail ones, and I'll let him talk about that.
Yeah, so two years ago, during the budget process, after council adopted goals and objectives, you recall during one of the workshops, there was a workshop dedicated solely to those goals and objectives, and I'll just leave it at that. Last year, that did not happen, you know, and I will tell you that I was very cognizant of the goals and objectives associated with the city council, and I did my best to apply that. And this drill is something I'm very comfortable with, and I've done it many, many times. I mean, you know, just as Mike mentioned, in my military career, the first thing you do is you get a job, and you look at what your job title is, and you make sure you got, understand it, you clarify it, and then you come up with, on a annual basis, performance objectives. And you list that out, and you get your boss to approve it. I mean, it's the same thing that city managers in many cities do, probably a little bit different than I do. But you'll also recall that I've received four evaluations now, I think, one was a six month, and for each one of those, I've provided to council what I recall pretty extensive summary of my performance objectives. And those performance objectives, to a large degree, were based upon, you know, different things, like mission, teamwork, leadership, budget, various things, goals and goals and objectives. And so really, that's what I've done, is I've just, I've taken the current evaluation form that was created last year, which is accepted, made its two pages, it's about eight major things, and then I've identified under each one of those goals and objectives associated with that. And most of the, if you read all of them, there are things that we've had in normal discussions in terms of budget, and or things that I have counseled. So what I did do is, you know, like, for example, efficient administration of city affairs, that's one of the things you review when you do my annual review. And so there's a number of objectives in the city budget that relates to that, and I've highlighted those that I think apply to that, and that I think I can achieve between now and March 31st. Remind you that the review period is from April 1st to March 31st. Also, look in your packet, there is last year's goals and objectives, and then there's this year's goals and objectives, because there's a six-month period from last year, which, you know, I needed to close the loop on a number of those objectives last year. So you're not really just grading me on the FY 2017-2018 budget, you're, you're reviewing my performance on the 1617 budget until end of that, and then the 1718. And so it's kind of a hybrid thing. So it forces all applicable laws and orders, there's a number of goals I highlighted there. And then on each one of these, I basically just took the document that was adopted in council, and I color-coded them such that some of them can be done during this rating period, and some of them won't be done this rating period, so you can't evaluate me on every goal and objective that you have for the entire FY, you know, fiscal year on a six-month period. The other thing is, a lot of these goals, and all right, Simpson just basically said this, a lot of these are, you know, they're things we do every day, some of them are tangible, I either did it or didn't, or the staff or the city accomplished it, either yes or no. And some of them, they're a good goal or objective now, but, you know, something might displace it because there's a higher target. And so, you know, I just remind you again, my philosophy is that I'm going to really push the envelope, and I'm going to set the bar, the bar what I consider to be very high, that I'm supporting all these objectives, and I will try to accomplish all of them. I mean, but reality, you know that some of these will be deferred, and, but I have it as a target, and I'm going to approach it that way for as it comes. So I have proposed these objectives or performance objectives, I haven't talked to any of the six council members of the mayor on these. Some of these are not part of my review, like fitness. I place a high importance on fitness, my, fitness in all aspects, my physical fitness, my mental, my spiritual, and my, you know, my ethics associated with that. So I placed that, and that's always been on my performance reviews, whether I'm in this job or other jobs I've ever been, and the same thing with personal growth, I'm always trying to learn every day, it's always been a goal mine for Republicans since 1984, it's always been a goal. So I propose these for your review, and I'll take any comments, guidance, and if I can revise, if I need to help out there with this.
Okay. Bill, I may have just heard you entertain that you're, instead of acting tonight, that you're kind of suggesting that we get back with you on comments, and that you might bring back something that was modified, instead of us in open, at this open mic discussing those with you, that we can talk with you individually about items. Is that what I just heard you saying?
Well, you always have the option. I, you know, I think that you had it for a week, and I haven't received any feedback, so I would take that as there probably good enough. If you're comfortable with that, and I would say take action and approve it. If you're, if you're not, and you want to take a review on that, I'm easy, I can do it anyway.
I'm going to look to the council members to see if there's a consensus to act this evening. If there is, then we'll go ahead and entertain a motion. Is everybody fine with acting this evening? Okay? Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the performance objectives as set forth by our city manager for fiscal year 2017-2018?
So moved.
Michelle has made a motion, do we have a second? Mike Colmeyer has seconded the motion, we're open for discussion.
I'd like to say.
Okay, Michelle?
Well, first of all, since you've been here, I've been on council, and we've always had goals and objectives, and you have always done the chart that prioritizes what things you recommend. We've always had the color-coded chart and reviewed it, and had to move things when more important things, like when we got Oakville and whatever. So it's the same, to me, I'm not understanding what's different from what we've been doing.
In one particular year, there was a specific council action to select these, it wasn't ever a vote, but I can sense that it's what it was.
Well, we did that in the very first year, because you were new and hadn't been a city manager.
It was the second year, when the mayor first came in.
Oh, okay. And so we felt the need to do that.
But in previous years, I pushed that.
Yes.
You know, I had pushed priority lists, I had provided you those things.
You have.
Other means associated with that, not disorganized and structured as this is here.
Yes, but you've been excellent at that, and I've not felt the need for you to have to do something different.
Okay. Do we have any other discussion? Okay, there's no further discussion, oh, Mary Ann?
So you're the CEO of the city, and working with us in workshops, you know what the city council's goals and objectives are. You put this together, and, you know, it's something that we've kind of all worked towards. Is there anything on here you don't want on here? Is there anything on here you, or anything you'd like to add?
Well, I added a number of things, I mean, if you take a look at, in more specific terms, I added quite a bit about partnering, great effective partner, I mean, I added some goals to those which are specific to things that I think are important. Also, you know, the teamwork, the leadership, I mean, we've had this discussion before, but the intangible of most of what I do is the general leadership and the management of the staff, you know, that's hard to objectively measure in a formative way, I mean, work with that. I will say that I've been, I wasn't planning on going back to the ICMA conference for the full thing, but then I probably won't all of them. But Wednesday morning, there is a session which I know you're going to go, which is on, you know, the same exact topic, and I'm going to see what other than, but I'm very satisfied with it. And I'm, I'm, I think this resonates with what you expect out of the city manager, and I'm comfortable with that, I'm probably not going to cheat everything to the hundredth degree, but I think I've, it gives me, it's like you have, is objectives for what I'm going to work for, and then support the city council's goals and objectives, I think we're seeing.
Okay. Mary Ann?
The main thing is that it's a mechanism by which everybody knows, here's the game plan, and here's what I get graded on, and here's what I know these folks sitting up here are going to grade me on, and so that there's no surprises for anybody, and that's the, if you're okay with that, that's why I'm asking, you're the CEO and...
I'm telling you in advance, there's going to be ones that I don't, that aren't getting done. You can, and again, it's not an evaluation, it's not a grade as your review, and I don't mean to be technical, but that's the way the forum came out, was a review, because it's really a feedback also. I mean, you're trying to provide new feedback, I'm providing new feedback, and it's an interactive thing in which, you know, again, and I know that's come out, I mean, it's been with city managers, you know, no one likes to be graded once a year, you know, or evaluated, but...
Well, I, point taken, in terms of the grade, it's just, it talks about performance objectives and performance evaluation. We have to put some things down in a piece of paper at the end of the year, each of us, that helps everybody understand, and you do the same. You tell us, this is what I feel like I've done, and we, taking a look at the document, say we agree or we disagree, or I like what you did here, and we denote it. And so that's why I'm asking, if you're telling us that there are things that, you know, are not going to get done, do we want to include them on the document?
No, I don't know with any of them, and I just know realistically, take a look at your goals and objectives that you have, you're probably not going to get all those done next year, if they're council adopted. I'm going to do the best you can, but priorities are going to change, and you're setting a target and direction for this council, for the city in the future. We're going to do the best we can to support you, and I'm satisfied with this document.
It's fluid.
I'm trying to help in terms of, when we get to the end of the...
The review.
Right. If there's something you don't want on here, take it off.
There's nothing I want on or off, no one provided me any, you know, there was no leverage, there was no one breathing down, no one said, yeah, this, I mean, this is reasonable.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay. All in favor of adopting the materials presented by Bill as his, as his performance objectives for 2017-2018, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, the motion carries, brings us to item number seven. All matters listed under this item are considered routine by the city council and will only be considered at the request of one or more aldermen. Coincident with each listed item, discussion will generally occur. Does anybody have something from items 7.1 through 7.6 that they'd like to pull? Okay. Brings us to item eight, consent agenda, all matters listed under this item are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussion on these items. If discussion is desired by any alderman on any item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Do I have a motion to approve and or accept items 8.1 through 8.6?
So moved.
I have a motion to approve 8.1, and I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, which brings us to item number nine, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a motion for Michelle to adjourn, do we have a second?
Second.
Mike Colmeyer has seconded the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries, we are adjourned.